We're not quite here.
Being quiet.
Let me check your settings, okay? Yeah, we're on.
I gotta turn my off.
They fixed it.
I like it. So we're right on the mic there. I like it. All right. Good evening. We would like to call our regular meeting for the Holbrook City Council to order on October twenty seventh at six P M. All right, roll call, everyone is here. We appreciate everyone being here. And we will have our pledge of allegiance by Councilman, led by Councilman Kester, followed by um our invocation by Pastor Holland's words with Saint John Baptist Ministry Church.
I.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Eternal guard, God of grace, of mercy and love. We pray that you bless us in this meeting and continue to make us committed to serving our town and its residents. Lord, please make your face shine on us and be gracious to us. We pray that we feel your presence during this meeting because we want to do your will. We pray that this meeting focus upon you and your plans for us as a body of believers who are leaders in our community. Let our actions in this meeting be valuable to our goals, which are to build a garden of Eden in Holbrook. We ask your blessings upon this great nation, upon our leaders, upon our military and this council. And let us do your will in all the things that we do, for this is our prayer in the name of your sweet son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Holland's word. We wanna give a congratulations again to celebrating their seventy-four years here in Holbrook with the Saint John.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number four consent agenda will actually be for the October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two agenda.
Ah, yes, good catch.
So. Do we have a motion for approval of a consent agenda of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two?
I'll isolate them.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. All right, number five, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
There are none. Item number six, call to the public for agenda items.
There are none.
There are none, thank you. All right, item number seven, new business. Got Northland Pioneer College report by one of my favorite people, Betsy Ann Wilson.
Thank you Mayor Smith, and thank you. It's good to see all of you council. Um, I, I have hopes, hopes to come periodically and report on what's going on at the college, and I haven't been here for a while, but I wanted to start with some important dates and then talk about some events that are going to happen and have happened. And so um on November fourteenth, that's the day on N P C dot E D U that our spring semester schedule is gonna be available for all students. So those of you that have been around the college for a while, remember that we used to print a schedule and we also, also used to print a catalog and we used to put them in the mailboxes. And if any of you pick up your mail at the post office, we often found them there. And so we've gone to distributing all of these things online. And so the, the core schedule will come out on November fourteenth. Veterans priority registration will take place on November twenty first. Veterans get priority registration and can get their classes first. And then on November twenty eighth, registration is open to the public. And this is important because N P C Friends and Family, which is the foundation that I direct and the foundation that supports Northland Pioneer College, has an unprecedented total of about seventy thousand dollars in scholarships available for the spring semester. Um, the great challenge is gonna be to get students to apply for all of those. And it's something that I've been working at every semester by um teaching students how to apply for scholarships, not just to go to N P C, but to go to any college. The last thing I wanna hear is a student took out a loan to go to college. And so that's been kind of my, in addition to raising money, my crusade is to get them to apply for scholarships. So if you know anybody that would like to have me come by and talk to students, whether they're, you know, adult students, non-traditional students returning to college, or high school students who have just finished high school and they're matriculating to college, I would love to come talk to those students. I'm starting to do presentations with high school seniors because now is the time for them to be thinking about applying for next fall. Because our scholarship application windows, like most colleges, um open in the semester prior to when the scholarship is needed. So our applications for the spring semester of twenty twenty-three opened on October first and closed November seventeenth. And this is a new method that we're using this semester that I hope is gonna work really well. So far, so good. One single online application will put you into the running for all the scholarships for which you apply. So there's no longer need to submit multiple applications because we have so many scholarships now that was becoming really difficult for the students and really difficult for media management. So we're hoping this is gonna be a, a great new start. So for the spring semester, um scholarships for fall will always open March first, and they'll be open also for about six weeks and they'll close in mid-April. The reason we do that is because we want students to know close to or prior to semester registration if they've won a scholarship, because that can help them plan what they're gonna register for. Most of our scholarships are in the neighborhood of a thousand dollars each. And so if you have any students who are interested too, I encourage them to contact me. Um, so we, we also, I don't know if y'all know, but we started partnering as a college with United and Saint Mary's Food Banks. And so we have food distributions just as a lot of our cities do. And our upcoming one is gonna be on November sixteenth here at the Pina Desert Campus from one to three in the afternoon. And we've had about a dozen food distributions here since we started. We also do them in Winslow and Sholo and down at our White River Center. And they have been an overwhelming success. We've pretty much given away all that we had to give, which is both good because we need to get that food out there and bad because so many people need it. But we're gonna continue that effort by partnering with the food banks um for the foreseeable future. And then um coming up at our Silver Creek Campus on November eleventh, twelfth and thirteenth, and then also on the seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth is going to be our first musical production since COVID. We, we had a couple of years where we were doing online presentations, and this is a production of Little Women. And we have a, a new theater director, Carson Celine, and this is gonna be his first um production as well, so I hope that y'all can come out and support him. And tickets are on sale at N P C dot E D U, and you can do them as pre-purchases or, or have them held at roll call. So these are events that are coming up at the college. We're super excited. We, we, I keep calling him our new president. We have a president that we've had for a year, a year last July. His name is Chad O' Hazel Baker. And I was hoping he could be here tonight, but he's actually at a national conference of community college board members with, with one of our board members, Christine Laffter, our board chair. And so I'm hoping I can bring him to an upcoming meeting. If you haven't met him, he's a really dynamic person and has been, I think, really good for the college, so I hope to bring him next time. Um, and I wanna report to you about Pedal the Petrified, not only as a, as a success for our, our foundation, but um also I think as a success for Holbrook and also for the community of Winslow. We started Pedal the Petrified back in twenty thirteen, and it's a non-competitive bicycle tour of Petrified Forest National Park. And riders have two options. They can do the ride from the north entrance down to Rainbow Forest, and that's approximately fifty kilometers or about thirty-two miles. At, or they can do the, the round trip and they have to take in the Blue Mesa Loop going both ways to clock up a hundred kilometers. And if they choose the one-way trip, we shuttle them and their bikes back to the ride start. Um, we started in twenty thirteen with about forty-five riders and it, it grew subsequently. We have it capped. We don't ever wanna have more than two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and fifty riders for a lot of reasons, but the main one is the, the riders really enjoy the experience of it being a small ride. I don't know if, if any of you are familiar with supported bike rides around the country, but there will be literally thousands of bike riders in some of these. And they love the experience that they're out there in this beautiful natural environment and they feel like they're the only person on the road, which is really cool. Um, this year was the first year in two years that we've had the ride live. We did a couple of virtual rides where people were able to choose their ride, choose their friends, go where they wanted, go the distance they wanted, and post it on Facebook because of COVID. And um those were fun, but it was a lot better to be back in person. It was, it was really cool. So it was, it was held on Saturday, October first. And we had two hundred and twenty-five people actually come, register and come to the ride. And the thing that I think is really cool, um, I always thought that this could, could be a destination event for people, and I wanted it to be for two reasons. Um, I manage the foundation and, and for Navajo and Apache Counties, there's not a lot of wealth up here. You know, there's, there's, so for the purpose, the practical idea of ga, of raising scholarships for students, I thought, you know, there's gotta be a way to get off the mountain and, and, and let people know about Northland Pioneer College. Because I'm not a salesperson, I can't sell things, but I can talk about our students. We, we have the most amazing students anywhere. I, I don't think I could've gone to college if I had to surmount what our students have had to do. And so when I talk about our students, people are, are amazed and they've never heard anything about like that either, and so they get excited. And um, so I wanted to do that to get people involved. And, and the other reason was I thought, you know, anytime we can bring people up here, we can use it as a vehicle to continue to, to promote the whole Colorado Plateau. So we stuff the rider bags with information about things to do from the Utah border down to the White Mountains. You know, all the hiking trails and the museums and the visitor centers and the events that take place. And um, so the cool thing about this year is we had the two hundred and twenty-five riders, only a hundred and sixty-eight of them came from Arizona. And of the hundred and sixty-eight from Arizona, only thirteen came from the N P C service area. And on the one hand, that sounds kind of like, you know, you didn't have any local riders. I mean, we, we welcome local riders. We love our local folks to come. But I love the idea that those people had to come and stay in hotels and eat in restaurants and shop in stores. And so um that's the first time we've had that kind of turnout where most of our riders actually came from way outside the area. There were a few from Flagstaff that probably came over from the day, but most of them come and stay in hotels. And so I was super excited about that. And I was also really grateful that um once again, everybody, everybody finished the ride unscathed. I always worry about people till they're off the course, but it was a good ride. It was a beautiful day. The weather was perfect. And we raised about thirty-five thousand dollars for scholarships, so I was really excited. Um, we've already met with the park staff and we're, we're, this is the latest we've ever held the ride. It's usually fallen on a fair weekend. Um, and, and I, I sort of, the first ride that, that there ever was in twenty thirteen was actually put on, it was before I started N P C Friends and Family. It was put on by the college's fortieth anniversary committee. Um, and, and I thought, what a cool event. We gotta keep it, we gotta keep it going. But, but it wasn't my idea. Somebody, somebody smarter than I thought of it. Her, her name um is Deb, and she used to be our theater director, and she now lives in Wisconsin. And she came back and rode with us four years ago. Um, so that was really cool. But the um, the ride has, has just continued to grow and, and, and be a success. And so we, as, as big as it got, the last time we had it on fair weekend, we had some issues with lodging. So we, we decided this year to, for a couple of reasons, to try to move it back a little bit later, also because it's a little bit cooler. And just the couple of weeks made all the difference. So we've met and we're, we're, we're tentatively looking at Saturday, September thirtieth for next year's ride. And then we'll um, it will open registration usually around um February because people start making their plans really early in the cycling world. And another kind of interesting factoid is the, the average age of riders for Pedal the Petrified um is always in the, in the mid to high fifties. The shirt was fifty-eight, and I had three gentlemen of eighty ride this year and do the whole hundred kilometers, so. And then we had a kid that was fourteen that rode with his grandpa, so that was really cool. So that's my report about Northland Pioneer College. It's good to be back and see all of you, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We appreciate it. We, we appreciate having N P C. They're a great community college. I'm an alumni, you know.
Yes.
And you know, we do have great instructors and, you know, it is great that we have so many students that wanna stay and then you have these resources. So there is no excuse for money anyways for not to go to school. And so we appreciate you getting out there, and I know you do get out there and talk to the high schools, and we're thankful for that. And we're also thankful for your work on the foundation to make sure the scholarships are possible, and then also for the Pedal the Petrified. And she's being humble because I know she has a, a big part in this successive that Pedal the Petrified.
Yeah, a lot of luck too, really, honestly.
Yeah, so. She was able to get some good press right at the beginning of it and.
Yeah, I did. I had a, I had a lady ride in the third year that, that wrote an article in Triple A High Roads Magazine, and after that it was like, I don't even advertise it. It's just.
And how quickly do you uh sell out?
Yeah. Oh, this year it took a little bit longer, I think, because of the pandemic.
In the past, I remember you were.
About a month in the past. This took a little bit longer.
So it's about two hundred dollars to?
It's a hundred and fifteen.
It's a hundred and fifteen.
And, and I'm, I'm actually um gonna have to raise it next year for a couple of reasons. Um, well, the gas prices this year made everything more expensive, but um the park is really gracious to allow us to do it when they do it. Their fiscal year being a federal agency falls um September thirtieth to October first. So we talked about doing it even the first week in October when they're starting with a new budget, and the concern about that is a federal shutdown. So if the federal government shuts down and closes the park, it's not just that we have to ask, you know, sixty-plus volunteers to show up on another day. It's those riders that come from all over that have got hotel rooms and stuff that can't just go, well, I took this weekend and I, I can't, you know. So we're, that's why we're doing it the last week in September. And, and that will cost, that could potentially cost the park a little bit more on what they call cost recovery, because they have to work with what budget they have left. And so they will, they charge us, you know, if they need to, to um, for example, pay a ranger to be on duty that day and they, they're out of budget, they would pass that on to us. So I may, I may be upping the fee a little bit. Not significantly. Ours is still, as, as supported rides go, ours is pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, that's great.
And we, we, people tend to add donations, so.
Councilman Marsh.
Uh, is there uh one place where folks can go on your website to find scholarship and application information?
Yes, N P C dot E D U. And then if they click on scholarships, it's on the, on the hamburger menu, it'll say scholarships. It tells them everything about scholarships and financial aid. And then if you, when you go to that scholarship search page to find the N P C Friends and Family ones, just use N P C Friends and Family as the search term. And they'll take you, any of the ones that say open, all you have to do is read the criteria, and if you qualify for it and you apply for that one, it will populate all the ones that you qualify for.
Thank you.
Because they all have a little bit different criteria. Thanks for asking. And encourage if you know students, they need to complete the F A F S A, the Free Application for Federal Student Aid. They can do that October first every year. And, and most scholarship funders, not just me, um, most scholarship funders require that because it's, it's the, it's the common yardstick that tells them, it helps them ascertain what a student's um unmet need is. And, and that doesn't mean it disqualifies someone that makes more money. It just, it's, it gives them an idea if there's a need-based scholarship where you have, you know, and ours are, some of them are need-based and some of them are merit-based. And so it just is a common yardstick for measuring everybody. But the other thing that's really cool is every year I have students to tell me, oh, I don't wanna do the F A F S A. It takes so long. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's kinda like doing your taxes. You kinda have to just sit down and do it. In fact, you really need to have your tax return from the year prior, two years, actually two years prior to this year to do it, because they'll ask questions about that. And then invariably, I have a student that finds out that they get a full Pell Grant and their college is paid for because they did the F A F S A. And then they can get scholarships on top of that. And if you get more than what you need, you know, you can save it for your university education, so.
Okay.
Good way to start.
And.
Did any foreigners from other countries come in and ride a bike?
Um, not this year, but we had, we had a gentleman from the Philippines a couple of years ago, and we had a, a young man from South Korea before. The furthest I've had in the United States, I've had Alaska. And the past three years, we've had a gentleman from Connecticut, and he registered this year, but he couldn't come ride. But he comes from central Connecticut, so quite a ways.
We saw, I asked, is they, there were some people in the coffee shop from England.
Oh.
And they were riding from, from New York to L A.
Wow. That's quite a, that'd be kinda fun to do.
And they were riding their bikes all the way.
As long as you weren't in a hurry.
And they got free, the bike was on an airplane free.
Oh, wow.
They didn't charge them to fly, fly their bikes.
Wow.
So that was a good one.
That'd be a great adventure. I, I have dreams of that when I retire, going on a big long bike ride.
Any other questions, comments?
I have one question. So the Pedal the Petrified, is that part of the fundraiser for the scholarships then?
Mm-hmm. It's, so N P C Friends and Family is the college's nonprofit five oh one C three. And I say it's the colleges, we're an independent organization, but we're a component unit of the college, and, and so it's our fundraising event. It's, it's one of the major ones we do every year.
Okay.
Okay. Councilman Woodford.
Yeah, uh, it's good to see you, Beth. It's been a long time, so good to see you.
Thanks.
And thank you uh for keeping the partnership between the foundation, the college, Holbrook and the park thriving. You know, it's very important to all entities of it, so thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kip. I think it's exciting that we can have that partnership and, you know, the other thing that was kinda cool is when we started doing Pedal the Petrified, you didn't see a lot of tourist traffic in the park. And twenty sixteen was kind of a bellwether year because it was the Find Your Park effort, you know, with the centennial. And that was a really heavy traffic year, but I think it really helps promote Petrified Forest. I think a lot of people driving along I forty, you know, they come in and they go to the visitor center, but they don't really go see the park. And what I hear people say, we, we do a survey every year after the ride and ask them, you know, all kinds of things. How do we make it better? What do we do? And we overwhelmingly hear, especially from people that have never been there, how much they love it. I had no idea it was like that. I had no idea it was out there and that they're coming back or they're telling people about it. So I think that's really cool.
Fantastic.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And any other comments? All right. Thank you so much for coming, Mark.
Thanks for having me.
Look forward to seeing you again in a few months.
Sounds good. I'm heading to Taylor. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, we'll go on to item number eight, summary of current events. Um, I'll go ahead and start. So um last week I was invited by the Joseph City Foundation to have lunch with Congressman O'Halloran. Uh, we had a great um discussion talking about the needs of our community, and particularly about, you know, the impact of the Choya closing and how that was gonna impact Holbrook. Um, and it is important for this, to stay connected with our elective officials. They have resources that we don't have. And with that, I did get to meet um his constituent services manager, Palet Yazi, and I have her contact information if anybody wants it. But she's a great resource for anybody needing to reach out to um any government agency. They've got kind of a, a second line that they can get you a quicker answer sometime. And so, you know, our elected officials are there and they've got their staff to help us with that. So we should be taking advantage of those opportunities and resources. Um, I also wanna give thanks to the Holbrook Roadrunner Booster Club. Um, it's Francie, Councilwoman, our Vice Mayor. It's gonna be one of those nights, I'm telling you. Make you know how well our, our football is doing and, and continue to do that. We appreciate that. But the H H S Booster Club, they're a nonprofit organization that supports the efforts of the Roadrunner sports teams and clubs. Um, their mission is to produce an environment that inspires students, athletes, coaches, parents, and the community to collectively create a positive and spirited atmosphere for all Holbrook Roadrunner athletic programs and clubs. And they've been putting on some great events after some of these games, and it is great just to see the community come out and support them, and it's a lot of fun. Um, so we appreciate them. And we wanna thank Cindy Tafoya and Janet Dean and their crew of volunteers for this weekend's Wild West Fest. A lot of work goes on to putting on events, and we appreciate everyone sacrificing their time and talents to bring these events to Holbrook. Also, we've got Halloween events happening, and I know I'm gonna miss some. But just so you know, Saturday, we've got down at the fairgrounds from two to five, the Elks always do their um annual Halloween's spectacular. Um, on Halloween, I know Thomas Suzy's Diner is doing something, the Roxy Theater and the Palau Trading Post. Um, if I miss some, please speak up, and we'll try to post those on Facebook and online as well. Um, so just as a reminder though, there will be a lot of kids wearing dark clothes, and just as our drivers, just be careful out there to make sure you're slowing down and, you know, triple checking before you start crossing streets, because kids get excited and they see family or friends across the street and they'll just dart out. So be really careful with them. But we appreciate those organizations that are saying, hey, come to us, you know, we've got a safe place to be as well. Um, November first, uh, the BYU Young Ambassadors has come into the George Gardner Performing Arts Center. You can find tickets online there. That's always a fun event. Um, and then, I don't want any boos from the audience. I know it seems early, but it really isn't. But our Festival of Trees is in five short weeks from today. Literally starts, I know, it's crazy, huh? I know. So that means the Parade of Lights is just that same weekend. Um, if you're interested in being part of the Parade of Lights, talk to Cindy Tafoya at the Holbrook Chamber of Commerce. Um, if you're interested in being in the Festival of Trees, the Festival of Trees is put on by a coalition of churches, community churches, which is nice, and I'm part of that committee. And so I do have registration forms here if anybody wants one. Uh, the theme this year is Christmas around the world. And so it's just fun if you have an organization, families, individuals, um businesses. It's really fun to see everybody come out and participate in these festivals, both the Festival of Trees and also the Parade of Lights, so. And with that, that is all I have for today. Yes.
So the Parade of Lights is also Christmas around the world?
Yes, yeah. And so the dates are actually December first to the third for the Festival of Trees. It means the Parade of Lights will be December third. And I double-checked my calendar today and it is literally five weeks from today is when we start, so doesn't even seem possible, I know. All right. With that, we will turn the time over to Vice Mayor Kean for any updates.
Okay, well, first my condolences to the Ortega family. Deloria passed away. And she, she was one of a kind. And she figured is a central part of many of my best stories. A couple of them made my columns, but I won't repeat them now. She was a good-hearted, good woman, and I'm very sorry to hear that she passed away, but she had health problems. And while not a Holbrook native, I wanna send my condolences to the Taylor family. John Taylor uh was a Superior Court Judge here for years. He was an excellent one. He, he just, he was a good man, and he had a wicked sense of humor, so he will also be missed. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Councilman Marsh.
Couple of things. Um, I had to work on Saturday, but I did get some time to stop by Wild West Fest, so thanks for everybody for putting that together. All the food vendors who, who came and um redactors and the um beanbag tossers and et cetera. It was a good event. Uh, speaking of events, I'll remind folks that this Saturday, uh, the twenty-ninth, from ten to two, um, we're meeting up at the animal shelter if you're interested in volunteering. I know there are Boy Scout groups and Cub Scout groups and National Honor Society groups that need volunteer hours. Here's some opportunities. Um, again, intended to animal shelter, um, we're gonna be uh basically making sure that the uh playyards that were generously donated, uh, at least the fences by a private donor, um, the city helped um blade that area. And now there's, because of the wind, you know, areas under the fence that dogs or things are getting out underneath. So we'll be kind of weatherproofing those. Um, I'll be providing lunches. Make sure if you're coming to bring uh shovels and gloves, uh sun protection, should be a nice day. So um, hope to see folks there. And then finally, of course, next week's the uh election, um, the general election, you should say. There's uh, there's been, there are races that we've heard a lot about, um, but you know, don't overlook the ballot initiatives because there's a lot that are um directly res, uh directly influence what we do here, especially in small communities, things like fire protection and stuff like that. So make sure you read some of those um and think about them and catch your boat. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the initiative and referendum ones are very important too.
Yep.
Read and care for it.
Read and care for it, yeah. Thank you. Councilman Woodford.
Um, yeah, uh, so yeah, condolences out to the Ortega family. Uh, Gloria was a wonderful person to know and uh hang out with. She was pretty awesome. But yes, condolences to the Ortega family. Um, and again, emphasis on uh Saturday for the friends of the shelter and the project with uh getting the dog runs and play yards for the dogs. Um, I've been working up there volunteering uh, because there's so many dogs and cats. Um, so volunteers, we need you. Come up and just walk a dog and pet a cat and um you can help clean up poop if you want. Feeding and giving them treats, it's just, yeah, there's just so many of them, and every day there's more and more coming in. And uh no place warm to go because all the shelters, not only in this area, but the state and all over the U S, there's so many uh other shelters that they hold, so whatever you can do, volunteer, donate food, treats, you know, for a little bit of time. What are we having for lunch on Saturday?
The best hot dog you'll ever have.
And again, get out and vote, 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 vote. That's our voice and you've got to make it uh be known, so vote people.
All right, thank you. Councilman Dixon.
Uh, yeah, my condolences to the Ortega family and uh the family of John Taylor. Francie, I don't know if you know, but John Taylor swore me in as a law enforcement officer July first, nineteen eighty-seven. Yes.
What a great guy.
Yep, so um I also attended the Old West Fest and it was, it was good, but uh not as much foot traffic this year. I think a couple of reasons, because of the wind and the railroad crossing was shut down. None, none of the uh, the southern traffic. None, none of the, uh, the southern traffic came through, so I think that had an impact on it. So we'll see how it goes next year. Um, again, elections coming up. Uh, go out and vote, go to the polls, vote on Election Day. Um, that's the way our, our, our elections were designed, is to go in on that first Tuesday in November and cast your vote in person on paper. So, um, we live in a, a wonderful republic. And our, our republic is like no other on earth, where we get to choose our representatives to, to go to the State House and to the, um, uh, the nation's capital to represent us and to do our bidding. So I, I agree, go out and vote.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Nelson.
I'm gonna say something that's gonna be disputed. But I, I would like to thank the railroad for the effective, safe way that they did a major closing. I know a lot of us were inconvenienced. I know my son had to drive clear through Joseph City to go. But they worked day and night for those three and a half days, and they did an excellent job with no, with being safe. They had officers there, and I would like to thank them, though I, I know that you don't think of it. And I, I, we used to do things like this at the power plant where we'd go three and a half days and have all of, and it's a real difficult thing to plan and carry out. So I'd like to thank them. And I'd, I'd also like to piggyback on what our mayor said about Halloween, what a dangerous evening that is with little ghosts and goblins and ballerinas darting in and out of traffic, that we need to be specially careful.
Thank you. Councilman Kestner.
Yeah, condolences to the Ortega family. Um, I noticed, uh, people are going to Safeway and there's a lot of shelves are empty, people wanting eggs. Well, on Saturdays, uh, up at Tractor Supply, there's a man who and his wife come up there and they had plenty of eggs and they had great fresh vegetables. So if you're running out of eggs, and they had them at a decent price.
Yeah, we appreciate that. Now that all our gardens are freezing over, right?
You have to share.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll turn it over to City Manager Solis.
Sure. Yeah. So in addition to the West Fest, we had a, the annual high school cross-country race at the golf course this past Friday. Uh, there were twenty-three schools that participated. Uh, and I wanna thank everyone who helped make that a successful event. Our guys got out there and widened the roads and got things straight. This weekend, um, coming up, uh, November third, is another high school cross-country race. This time thirty-plus schools will be participating. So thank you for all the help to make that a success. As a result of these recent rains, our crews have been working on the wastewater treatment ponds. The rain, the rains did some heavy damage, and, um, over the next couple of weeks, they'll be working to get those, uh, ponds up, up the snuff. Um, the grant-funded Ada Taxiway Pavement Project that we had talked about, pavement preservation project is complete. Uh, this work, of course, will help extend the life of our taxiway. We talked about, uh, moving the cardboard compactor over to the main site. Uh, work is progressing well there. They poured one of the pads on Monday. They'll pour another pad. And then eventually they'll move the compactor over there so that when you go to dump your trash off, you'll also be able to dump your cardboard right there. So it's really convenient. And it's also gonna work well for the employees. Uh, when people aren't coming in, they can be, um, compacting the cardboard. So that's a, that'll be a nice benefit for folks. Uh, it's, it's cold out, as you know, so the pipes have been winterized, sprinklers and restrooms in the park. So our park restrooms are closed. This weekend though, we have a tournament, so they'll still get the restrooms open for Hunt Park, but after that, they'll be closed for the season. Then finally, um, I wanted to say we got some assistance with our phones. We, our phones were programmed in two thousand and five and haven't been able to figure out how to reprogram them. And staff's been working real hard at that. We finally found somebody that was able to help program our phones. That's done. So now we have the proper programming. When you call in, go to the voicemail, it'll go to the right location. That's really exciting. We've been working on that for a long time. The problem is the company that made our phones and many phones throughout America, uh, went out of business. It was a Canadian company that fortunately was able to locate somebody online, probably a former employee for all I know, was able to call on in and give us some help. And so really happy about that, uh, that we got that done. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Moving on to item nine, submission of petition for items not on the agenda.
There are none.
Thank you. And item number ten, adjournment. Do we have a motion?
Show me.
All in favors? Say aye.
Aye.
Video post. Stick around. We're all out here, right? All right. And call us me in six thirty-four. Thank you.